All right, good evening, everyone. Tewksbury Zoning Board of Appeals, May 28th, 2020 is in session. I was just reading the agenda. This is something new on the top, so I'm going to read it. Due to recent open meeting law policy set forth by the governor during the current state of emergency, the meeting will be held as a virtual meeting. To participate, please call (978) 771-0819. Again, (978) 771-0819. And view live through the televised cable channels Comcast, Channel 99 and Verizon 33. That's for people who might be watching at home, wondering if they can participate in the meetings. All right, first item on the agenda, approval of the minutes. I don't think we have any minutes.
I did not see any, no.
Okay, so we're skipping that one. All right, first item on the agenda, we'll go with the continued hearing. American Outdoor Advertising Company, M.A.L.L.C., on behalf of P. 8 Oliver, 150 Daskum, L.L.C., care of AEW Capital Management for variance from Section 5291 of the Tewksbury zoning bylaws to install an electronic messaging center sign slash billboard, as shown on plans filed with this board. Said property is located at 150 Daskum Road, assessors map 113, Lot 26, zoned heavy industrial. All right, who's here for this one?
Mr. Chairman, Jamie Cutlass for American Outdoor Advertising, and I believe Stephen Ross is a principal in that company is here as well, and John Hyde, who's the property owner of California Pay.
Right, I see both of them. All right, go ahead, name and address for the record.
Okay, yeah, Jamie Cutlass, 84 Quail Run, Tewksbury, Mass. My office is 1147 Main Street, Tewksbury. This is a continuation, as you know, the board requested that we get additional plans with additional information, and which we've done that, and I want to go over those in one second. I just wanted to reiterate that we have been working with the town for two years on this bylaw, and if successful, if we're able to get the electronic messaging center of the town, we'll benefit by approximately $50,000 a year in addition to free advertising as well. So we did go over that before, but I wanted to now just go over the three, four additional plans that we've submitted. The first one is the certified plot plan that shows the exact location of the proposed billboard. The second one shows the exact distances to the residents in Andover and Tewksbury. The third one is just a wetland plan that we worked with Conservation on, and Conservation had us move the sign and then approved it. But the most important one, I believe, and the most informative one, is the last one, the illumination plan, the one that basically, I think, Mr. Lasecki wanted to see the last time, which he called an orientation plan. This plan, as you can see, shows the exact direction that the light would be generated from, from the electronic billboard, and it shows the strength of the light as well. And what you can see for the houses in Tewksbury, the south side of the site, and the houses in Tewksbury, the primary houses are approximately 900 feet away, the edges of their residential yards are somewhere closer at 720. And, but the key thing, the most important thing I think of is, if you look at the light, the brightest section of the light isn't directed towards the houses, it's directed towards the highway. It's only like the residual sections of the light that are directed towards the houses in Tewksbury, and, and that diminishes dramatically. And like it says in the note from Formtech, who designs the billboard, they said, they measured that lighting out to 250 feet, and I think the key sentence in there is that after 250 feet, the amount of light drops off quickly to be almost immeasurable. So we don't even think that the light from that sign would reach into the houses, into the residents of those houses, would really have to make an effort to, to look to see it. And as you can see from these plans, the tree covering is really thick and dense and extreme in between where that sign would be and the residences. And as far as the houses in Andover, which, the houses are a little fire away, but the back of their yard is a little closer, you could see there's a gap between where there's no, where there's no light emanating from the billboard, and that gap is what's oriented towards the houses in Andover. The lighting part of the north side of the sound is directed at the highway and not towards any of the residences at all. So we think this, this illumination orientation sign is really beneficial to our case because of two things, because the light diminishes dramatically after 250 feet, and it's only the residual parts of the billboard that are in any way going towards the houses. So if the board has any questions, we'll, we'll try to answer them more in depth.
I don't have any questions, if any board members have anything.
I have one.
Okay.
So on the Locust map dated May 14th, with the proposed billboard sign, it looks like the post is now in the railroad easement, as opposed to the one dated May 7th, where it was outside of it.
Yeah, it's definitely outside of the easement, because Conservation, there was a berm there, and Conservation had us move it so that it was not on the berm, but it's definitely not in the easement.
Okay. That was my only question.
Just so we all know, I will be voting on this, Nancy and Ray will be voting on this one. Same numbers as originally.
I have a quick question. Because of the height that you guys are putting it at, are you going to, is there any proposed tree trimming that's going to be going on and something like that, or is it high enough to where you don't have to take any of those down?
That was our intention. We put it as high as we possibly could so that we wouldn't have to take any trees down, and we're hoping not to do any tree trimming whatsoever. We think it's above the tree line sufficiently so that we won't have to do, we definitely won't have to remove any, and we're hopeful that we don't have to trim any at all, and that's why we did put it up at that height. Thank you.
My only complaint was that we weren't notifying people that we're in this zone that we keep talking about, but that hasn't changed, and it's not going to change. Maybe at the next town meeting, we'll try to change something there.
Yes.
All right, anything else, board members?
Nothing for me.
Brian, do you have people on, on the line for this one?
We do, Mr. Chairman, and we have some people who are also trying to call in, and they might be getting a busy signal. I would just suggest to them to call back, and we will make sure to get it, we just only have one line. We do have a caller on the phone right now.
Okay, we'll be in a public hearing, we'll open it to the public at this time. If anybody would like to speak.
Can you just please mute your phone, mute your TV quick?
Sure. Okay.
All right, he's on the line, Mr. Chairman.
All right, go ahead, call, name and address, please.
Douglas Housler, my law office is Lampert Housler in Rodman at 10 North Road in Chelmsford, Massachusetts. My first question is, is the, I can't, I couldn't see clearly enough on the plans that I was able to get online. If the height of the pole is 160, and the plant, and the board is 165 feet, is that within a fall zone of the building at 150 Daskum Road?
Who can answer that?
I believe it would be, based on the plan, the illumination plan. But the owner of that property is present and would be aware of that.
Yeah, I do think it would be technically in a fall zone, but we could indemnify appropriate parties for that.
Who's the owner?
I'm sorry?
Mr. Hyde, John Hyde.
Okay, so he's telephone only. All right.
Correct.
My second question, if I may, Mr. Chairman?
Sure, go right ahead.
I would like to know for the record if any members who are voting on this have been contacted by the applicant or its attorneys since the last meeting?
No, I have not.
For the record, I have not. Ray Lasecki?
Aye.
We didn't hear you, Nancy.
No, I have not.
Thank you. The next question I had was...
Let me, let me, let me jump on that question a minute. I've been on this board for like 15 years, it feels like, I think, that's probably pretty accurate. I have never been contacted by an applicant, never. And I, I don't take kindly to that question. Go on with your next question.
There's no reason to be defensive about it, I'm asking a simple question.
I wasn't being defensive, I was making a statement. Go on with your next question.
I'll speak for itself, thank you. Does the board have any concerns that are relevant to this application that have not been, where this application is deemed to be a better location than the one that was proposed and denied at the last meeting? What are the members, how do they compare the two applications?
Anyone want to take that? I mean, I look at each one individually.
Mr. Chairman, I'm looking at this one individually.
As am I, I'm not comparing the two at all.
And I personally like it better, if, call out my feelings, I like it better because we're not cutting any trees. But that's not, that doesn't affect the decision.
Does the height, the fact that it's 55 feet higher than what was proposed by the other applicant have any meaning or concern to the members?
Well, I don't, I don't think I'm going to put the board, I'm not going to put the board through questioning on something that we've denied. We're not comparing the two, we look at everything individually. If you have a question for this applicant, then I'll hear it, but I'm not going to, I'm not going to cut hairs between what was last week or last month and this month.
I'm just asking a simple question of whether the height, the significant height difference has any bearing on the members' thought process in considering the present application that's before the board?
I, I don't care to answer it, and I don't know if any board members care to answer that question, but I don't, I don't care to entertain this, this, this road that we're going down, where we're comparing this one to that one, because that's not how we, that's not how we work. We take each, each one individually. That you're inferring that last month's was denied because this one was on the table, and that's...
I'm not making any substantial difference, sir, I'm asking a simple question about how does the height factor of the present application matter to the members of the board? Is that of any importance to the board? And if so, why would it go with something that was at 165 feet versus something that might be lower? I'm just trying to understand the process that's being considered by the members.
Mr. Chairman, I think that he wants to understand why his, the one that he was representing last month was denied.
No.
I feel that this is the appropriate forum for that. I'm here to, you know, look at this particular application. And if I have a question about the height, I would ask that question.
I agree with your conclusion.
I'm speaking, Mr. Chairman.
Oh, that was Ray.
Thank you, it's hard for me to tell, I'm only doing this by phone, really.
Right.
I'm not trying to compare the two, I'm trying to understand how does the height of the board that's being proposed factor into your consideration? Is it important to the members? That's all I'm asking.
But that's not the way you're proposing your question.
It is, but you answered, if you'd answered it, I'd appreciate it. If you can't, you won't, and that's okay.
I did answer. I did answer. I believe I said I like that there's no trees being cut down for this applicant.
Thank you, sir. Is there anybody else that wants to offer any comments from the members that are voting?
Let, let's do this. If you have a question, if you have a question for this application, we'll hear it. If we're going to go and compare this application to the last one, I just won't hear it.
I don't think you're permitted to do that, sir, I think it would be a violation of the open meeting concept here. It's supposed to be discussion, but you're the chair.
Okay. If that's, if that's the way you feel about it, then we'll just, we'll continue on this course, and I don't think anyone's going to answer it, because we don't feel, and I think I can speak for the board, we don't compare this application to the last application, we don't, we don't, we look at everything individually, and that's, that's how this board has always done it. So we're looking at this application as this application, not compared to last month's. Last month's was denied because it was denied. If there's a problem with that, you have your due cause to appeal.
Well, it has been appealed, yes. But I'm asking about tonight's application only.
Okay, then ask a question about tonight's application.
Other than tree cutting, has any documentation or support been provided by this applicant to the board that it can control the height of the trees that are on my client's property?
I don't know if I can answer that. I have not seen anything that controls trees on other properties.
So if the trees on my client's property are growing, continue to grow higher, does the applicant agree that it has no control over cutting those trees?
This I don't know.
We can't go on another person's property without their permission.
Thank you, I don't have any other questions, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Anyone else, Brian?
No, but I'd give it a second, because I believe some people were trying to call in, and it might take the stream a minute to catch up.
I'm just going back and reading 5291, and as we always do, the reason we're here is because we're within a thousand foot of a residential or multifamily district use. Just as a reminder. All right, while we're waiting, anything else, board members?
No, I don't have anything.
Nothing from Ray.
And I really don't like that these residences that are within the thousand foot zone don't get notified.
Same.
I just like to keep saying that, maybe something will change.
Mr. Chairman, the stream has caught up, and we still have no callers, I think it's safe to move on.
All right, so if there's nothing else from the board members, I'll take a motion to close both parts of the hearing, and nothing else from the applicant as well.
I'd like to close, I'd like to make a motion to close both parts of the hearing.
Motion has been made.
Second.
Second, all in favor.
Aye.
Any discussion, board members?
I do appreciate the additional documentation in respect to the, the light diagram, I think that was important, and that's the only thing I have to say.
All right, anyone want to make a motion?
I'd like to make a motion to approve American Outdoor Advertising Company, M.A.L.L.C., on behalf of P. 8 Oliver, 150 Daskum, L.L.C., C.O.A.E.W. Capital Management for variance from Section 5291 of the Tewksbury zoning bylaws to, to install an electric message, messaging center sign billboard, as shown on the plans filed with this board. Said property is located at 150 Daskum Road, assessors map 113, Lot 26, zoned heavy industrial.
Motion has been made.
Second.
Motion has been made by Nancy, seconded by Ray, we'll do a roll call vote. Nancy?
Aye.
All in favor, Nancy?
Aye.
Ray?
Aye.
Chair is aye. Motion passes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, thank you, members of the board.
All right, good luck. All right, next item on the agenda. Francesco Land, L.L.C., for variance from Section 4130, Appendix B, for rear yard setback, there's special permit under Section 3651 of the Tewksbury zoning bylaw to construct a 6,950 square foot addition to the existing concrete block garage, as shown on plans filed with this board. Said property is located at 913 East Street, assessors map 102, Lot 52, zoned heavy industrial. This one will have Dan, Nancy, and myself. Mr. Cuco, are you the applicant? Turn your mic on.
That reddened the black, I can't remember which one is on. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, board members. For the record, Richard Cuco from Woodland Design, with offices at 73 Amal Court, representing Francesco Land, L.L.C., offices at 1830 Tewksbury. If I may, Mr. Chairman, I'm going to try to share my screen. Let's see how this works. Ah, here we go. The property is at 913 East Street, which this...
Mr. Cuco, you just shared yourself, you didn't, you didn't put anything up on the screen.
All right, let me see.
Little U thing with the arrow, if you have it open on your computer behind this screen.
Yeah.
Hit that little U icon with the arrow, little share content will pop up, and whatever you have open on your computer will come up as an option to share.
Okay. I guess that's not going to work.
Take your time, take your time, we, we all had a learning curve, we had like a two hour lesson on it that nobody knew about, there you go.
Ah, there we go.
There it is.
You got it.
Okay, thank you for your patience. The property is 913 East Street. For our butters, we have McDivitt Mac, we have a large 250 foot wide power line, to the rear of us is the Dumont's warehouse, and then across the street is an industrial building which used to be Mural Pharmaceutical. And you can see, Mr. Chairman, board members, that we have kind of a very unusual shaped lot, in that it's triangular. If we put in the 50 foot setbacks that are required in the heavy industrial zone, it pretty much wipes out the entirety of the lot from being able to be developed. So that's why we're here this evening to, to request our variance. I'm hoping that this is showing the site plan now.
It is.
Okay, thanks. Now, we might get this yet. The existing property has a building out in the front, and it has a concrete block building over in this location. What we did was, we designed the property in such a manner to maintain the integrity of the front yard setback when you're driving up East Street. This is the 50 foot setback which is required. Our butter to the rear is the railroad, so we feel that by having the building pushed to the rear of the lot, we wouldn't be impacting anybody's property as far as noise, sound, air quality and the like, so that we're requesting the variance to do so. And by, that's why the building's got an unusual shape in this location and cut off in this area, because we wanted to maintain as much integrity to the setback on East Street that we could, and, and doing so. So what that would require would be for the board to grant a variance, Section 4120, I mean 4130, sorry, Appendix B, to allow the setback in the rear to be 10 feet, which is consistent with the existing building that is in the southeast corner of the property. Along with that, there is a, I think it requires a finding under Section 3651, that the enlarged building would not be more detrimental to the neighborhood than what's already on the property. You may recall years ago, there used to be a gasoline station here, which is since gone, and now it's used as a landscaping business in the front building and a granite building in the rear building. We have a need to, a desire to build this additional building to get additional income for the families, and it would probably be similar uses, landscaping contractors, things of that nature. I provided to the board a memorandum in support of the application stating that the property is unique in shape and burdened by a power line easement, both unique to this lot and not the zoning district in general. Literal enforcement of the provision of the bylaw would cause a substantial hardship, both financial and otherwise, to the applicant by limiting the use of the property to 21% of building area, where normally in a heavy industrial zone, you're allowed 35%, so that's a substantial decrease. And we feel that the desired relief may be granted without substantial detriment to the public good, substantially derogate from the intent and purpose of the bylaw, not would it be out of character with the neighborhood in general, as the premises, as I said in my initial opening statement, that we're surrounded completely by heavy industrial users and no residential users are within a reasonable distance of our property. And if I have any questions, I will try to answer them for you.
Do you remember how long ago that gas station closed?
I'm going to say a good 10 years ago.
I was actually thinking more.
Yeah, probably closer, it closed when the one at the intersection opened up, so maybe it's close to 15, and all of the tanks have been removed from all the underground storage tanks that were in, in there for the gasoline stations, those have all been removed.
Now, what's, what's it being used for now? Because to me, it just kind of looked like a, come here and park your truck for a little while kind of place.
Yeah, recent, up until very recently, the property was leased out to Lowell Limousine Company that provides van service, picking up people that are shut-ins and the like, and he had a license for automotive repair and sale, and the owner of the property, the Giamano family, was not happy with the... And um the owner of the property, the Giamano family, was not happy with the way that business had been conducted. And as soon as his lease was up, uh they did not renew it. Uh and so you've probably noticed like in the last several weeks, the property's been cleaned up. There's been a lot of um, none of those used cars have been out front anymore that were out there for the sale. And they're in, they're in the process, there's a landscaper contracted in this building and they're in the process of cleaning it up and doing uh some new landscaping now.
So what's the new um proposed garage area for?
That's gonna be for either contractor garages for like landscapers or plumbers or carpenters or you know, people who have it, not um that I know of automotive repair.
Closed unit?
I'm sorry, it's not zoned uh H I one, so it wouldn't be uh automotive, wouldn't be allowed for automotive repair.
Dan, did you freeze? You were, you started that question, right?
Sorry, I was looking at the plot plan. Yeah, are they enclosed buildings where uh tenants are gonna lease each garage? Or is it enclosed garage?
Yeah, they would be um, they would be enclosed garages um and uh we've broken it up into what we thought would be manageable, leasable space.
What would we expect to see for vehicles out in that parking lot? Lots of them, one or two, not much?
Um, probably, um, I don't believe that uh there'll be that many because we have to get a if we're successful with your board, we'd have to get a special permit from the planning board. And um to have more than one heavy commercial vehicle would require additional special permitting from the planning board. To be outside, not inside, but outside.
Just to be More traffic is that gonna cost? I wonder.
Yeah, we don't anticipate uh these types of businesses usually have um, they have employees come in in the morning, they take the vehicles out, they're gone most of the day. And they come back in again in the evening. It's not a um, we don't anticipate retail type of use where it should be constant flow of traffic in and out. If you know the, the granite place, uh basically, um, I don't think they have that many vehicle trips going in and out. The uh front building is used right now by Doggedy Landscaping and that's, they pretty much leave in the morning and come back at when it gets dark. The landscape is worth late in the summer.
The the variance that we're looking for under forty one thirty appendix B is the rear setback. It's supposed to be fifty feet and that's and it's all we have is ten feet for that seven thousand square foot building.
Correct. If you, if you look, if we put in the fifty foot setback all around, we have a little triangle right here that we can build on. So that's why this building here was granted a variance over twenty years ago.
And the neighbor behind you is the railroad.
The railroad and then behind that is the Mullis's warehouse.
Mullis's warehouse comes all the way up that far on East Street?
Yeah, yeah.
I didn't realize that either.
So this is uh, this is the main warehouse, Mister Chairman. And then they have that secondary uh warehouse building. And uh then there's, they have overflow parking over here and then there's the railroad, so uh we actually kinda shield uh them, so. It doesn't, it doesn't look like it's, it's right there behind us, but that, but it is.
I learned something today.
That's why I like those G I S maps. You can get a pretty good perspective of uh of what the what's there from it, from the air. And then, as I said, it does require a um site plan special permit and possibly a use special permit from the planning board if we're successful in obtaining the variant.
So I'm trying to understand the the uh what special permit under thirty six fifty one. Is, did the commissioner already deny you guys because of this construction?
Yes, we have a denial letter in the uh
Yeah, it's in the uh, it's, it's in there, I saw it.
It was denied, it was denied for the setback.
The rear setback?
Yes. And I believe the applicant is with their experience just going for the thirty six fifty one.
Yeah, and not avoid coming back.
That's not on the denial, denial letter. Let me see if I can share over you.
Yeah, and the reason for that is the, the building commissioner bases it on the uh building permit that was applied for. So in the building permit, you apply um and the, and the variance for the dimensional is the, is the uh forty one thirty. So basically, the existing building is non-conforming, but it has the benefit of a variance. So if we're going to extend that building, it requires a special permit. Ah, there we go.
There's a thirty six fifty one.
So that's why we feel that just the variance alone would not suffice uh when we went forward, if successful, if we went forward.
Anything else, Dan and Ray, at this moment? We'll see if there's anyone on the line wants to talk.
No questions from Ray.
None here.
I think I'm all set.
For the moment, we're not gonna close the hearing. Uh Brian? Anyone around for this one?
No callers, Mister Chairman.
Alright, any more questions, board members?
None for me.
Anything else, Mister Kuko?
That's it, Mister Chairman, unless you have additional questions.
Um, someone want to make a motion to close both parts of the hearing? We'll have a little discussion.
I'd like to make a motion to close both parts of the hearing.
A second.
Motion was made by Nancy, seconded by Dan. All in favor?
Aye.
Um, little discussion on it. I asked how long ago this gas station closed because when I first moved here in nineteen ninety six, I used to get gas at that station. And I was sad the day it closed and um I remember the fight the, the gas station on the corner had to even get in there. That was, that was a big fight. That was before my time on the board, I think. I don't know, I might have been on the board for that one, but I remember it was a fight. And I, I've watched the decline of that piece of property for that many years. I, I for one am pretty happy that something's gonna get built up in there and it's gonna look nice and, you know, someone's, I'm happy that the owner wasn't happy with the tenant that they had and and now things are gonna get cleaned up over there. It's always been a little bit of an eyesore since the gas station's been gone. Hopefully this will clean it up a bit. This is my take on it.
Yeah.
If somebody had liked to make a motion, uh we need to do the special permit first. And we will do it in two separate motions. Whoever does it, special permit first and then we'll do the variance.
Before, before we, we, we vote. I'm a little confused on the thirty six fifty one granting the special permit. There is no, there's no denial from the building commissioner. There's nobody that says he needs a special permit.
It's a case of better to have and not need than need and not have.
Is this something that they, that that's the norm?
Uh, we do these quite a bit.
Yeah, I've seen them.
All it's saying is that since it's already an existing non-conforming because there's already a variance on the property for the existing garage, because that's only nine feet off the property line, right?
Yeah.
So what this is saying is you're, you're gonna increase that, that uh, how do they say it? You're gonna increase that non-conformity, if you will. And all thirty six fifty one says is that it won't be more detrimental to the neighborhood than what's already there. Uh, to be honest with you, I'm surprised it wasn't, wasn't asked for by the building commissioner. Cause I think this is a, a perfect one of, it probably should have been. That's, that's my take on it. Um.
Sounds about right. You've been doing these a lot longer than I have.
Got a couple of years on the board. Can't wait till you take over.
No, I'm not.
Alright, I apologize. Go ahead.
Don't apologize. Does that help you?
Yeah, no, I, I, it, it helps. I mean, if you're telling me that this is what they've done in the past, I'm, I'm all for it. I mean, it makes sense that the, the thirty six fifty one makes sense. I get it.
I mean, if, if this is the way I look at it. If, if the applicant is successful, I like that statement. If the applicant is successful at forty one thirty, then thirty six fifty one just goes along with it. It doesn't give them anything additional. It doesn't. But if they're successful in forty one thirty and we don't do thirty six fifty one, it's quite possible they're gonna be back here next month or two months after they go to, where do they have to go? The planning board next?
Yes.
Planning board. The planning board might say, hey, what happened to uh that special permit? And then they're just back in front of us anyways.
We know how much Richard loves to come see us.
I can come visit anyway.
It's easy now. You just jump on this computer thing.
First, we did this all the time.
I don't like it. Alright, we all set?
Yes.
So now, if somebody'd like to make a motion.
I'd like to make a motion to approve Francesca Land, excuse me, LLC for variance from I'm sorry, for a special permit under section thirty six fifty one of Tuxbury zoning bylaw to construct a six thousand nine hundred and fifty foot square foot addition to the existing concrete block garage as shown on plans filed with the board. Said property is located at nine thirteen East Street, assessors map one oh two lot fifty two, zoned heavy industrial.
Alright, motion has been made by Nancy.
I will second.
Seconded by Dan. All in favor? Nancy?
Aye.
Dan?
Aye.
Chair is aye. Okay, so the special permit is approved.
I'd like to make a motion to approve Francesca Land LLC for a variance from section forty one thirty appendix B for rear yard setback. Uh shown, uh as shown on plans filed with this board, said property is located at nine thirteen East Street, assessors map one oh two lot fifty two, zoned heavy industrial.
Motion has been made by Nancy.
A second.
Seconded by Dan. All in favor? Nancy?
Aye.
Dan?
Aye.
Chair is aye. Motion's approved. You're still on mute.
Thank you very much, Mister Chairman, board members. Uh the public actually really appreciates the fact that you're doing these virtual meetings so that at least some business gets conducted under these crazy times. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Alright. Any old business, board members?
Uh Mister Chair?
Yes.
I received a notice today that I have to uh reapply for uh the position on the board. Um, I'm not sure if Dan got one as well, or is that everybody gets them the same every year?
I did.
There is a, the position, uh Jerry's position was an actual member where uh Dan and myself are associate members. So um, I am, I'm gonna reapply for a position, but I'd like to reapply as an associate member. So if Dan would take the, or would consider taking the member position.
Now, do you know that, I appreciate that you're coming back. Thank God. Um, do you know that Jerry's position is up?
That was, uh said that they sent me an email. Uh Alex sent an email.
Yep.
My answer would be a, a mem, the member position would be up.
Okay.
I didn't get it because I'm already a member, so.
Well, that's good. I, I'm glad you're um, I'm glad you're coming back as an associate. That's fantastic. And uh Dan, I hope you come back as, as at least an associate. I hope you reapply.
I already did. I filled out the uh, the activity form and I'll do whatever you guys need me to do.
I don't think, I think you, do you apply for the
No, you do. You do. You have to reapply. I had to.
You, I think you, you apply the first time for like interviewing and things like that, but after this, all you have to do is fill out the form and then I think the selectmen sends you your appointment again.
Right, but how do you know from an associate, because I did it like, I don't know, twenty years ago? How do you go from the associate to the member position?
They either approve it or deny it.
Yeah, I think they just
No, 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 but let's, we've had this problem in the past where associate members just assumed that they would bounce up to a permanent member and it didn't happen. So let me, let me look into that. Uh, and we don't need to stop that in open hearing, but um yeah, it's there, there's something that needs to happen because we've actually lost a couple of members because um they didn't get just pushed up to the permanent member. You know what I mean? Just thinking it was gonna happen and I, I thought it as well. But I think the selectmen have to vote you in as a permanent member, or maybe you have to apply, whatever it is.
Yeah, I know I had to apply two years ago.
I got an email from uh Janine and then I got another one from um Melissa, I think it was. All you have to do to apply was to redo that civilian activity form on the Tuxbury website.
Right, but is that to apply as a permanent member or an associate member?
It didn't really say on the site. It just had like a checkbox.
Right, so like Nancy and I, we don't have to re-up for three years. With three years at a whack and you two are yearly.
Yeah.
So I, it'd be nice to have one of you as a permanent member. And we down to one associate because we need to fill the permanent member spot. Cause Jerry was a permanent member. Jerry was a three year. So we need to refill his spot and then we can get another associate in. You can't go right to permanent.
Right.
We leave it in your hands.
I'm sure, I'm sure Alex will send us all an email tomorrow or Steve or somebody, somebody will reach out, but I'll I'll make a phone call tomorrow and uh see what's up with that.
Okay.
Any new business? I hope next month we can uh actually get back in town hall. That would be nice.
That would be great.
That would be nice, nice.
Yeah, it'd be nice to get out of the house.
Yeah.
Anything else? Alright, someone would like to make a motion to adjourn?
I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
Motion's been made by Nancy.
Ray?
Second.
Seconded by Ray. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Unanimous vote. Thank you, everyone, for joining us in a virtual meeting. Be safe. See you next month.
Thanks, have a good night.
Thank you.